All right, we'll move right on to conduct of business. Item 10D is adopt a resolution approving a sanitary sewer lateral replacement program in the Crestmore neighborhood. Harry?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, and members of the public here tonight. My name's Harry Burrows, and I'm the city's project manager for the Crestmore reconstruction project. Item before you tonight is consideration of a sanitary sewer lateral replacement program in the Crestmore neighborhood. We previously brought an item to you on August 22nd, which was consideration of a replacement program in the neighborhood at that time. Based upon staff direction, or based upon council direction, staff has gone back, done some further analysis, and is here to present a revised program to you tonight for consideration. But before we go into the options that we're going to present to you, I thought it was worthwhile to take a moment and just review the existing conditions out there, as well as what is typically done on a sewer replacement project. So the exhibit up on the board here shows a typical home. It shows a sewer main out in the street, and that's the orange line with the sewer lateral going up to the house. In some instances, the lateral goes up the driveway. In other instances, the lateral may extend across the yard in this location. And on corner lots, it actually may come across the side of the lot here if there's a street on this side. The sewer lateral is broken up into two components. One's the upper lateral, and that is the section within the private property. So that's from essentially that red line here to the house. That's the upper lateral. The lower lateral is from that point to the sewer main. The maintenance responsibility for the sewer lateral in its entirety, if there is no cleanout, and a cleanout is shown here. In some instances, there are cleanouts installed for some residences. If there is a cleanout installed, then the property owner is responsible for maintenance of this upper lateral, and the city takes over maintenance of the lower lateral. If there is no cleanout installed, the property owner has the maintenance responsibility of the entire lateral. So on a typical sewer replacement project in the city, what the city does is they go in and they replace the sewer main and the lower lateral. And at that point, they'll notify the property owner that the sewer, new sewer lateral, lower lateral is being constructed. It's an opportunity for the property owner to then ascertain the condition of their upper lateral and replace that if they desire. It's not a requirement that any resident replace their upper lateral, except in the sole instance where the upper lateral is in such poor condition that it can't be connected to the new lower lateral. So, again, on a typical city project, the city will let the property owner know that the lower lateral is being replaced, and at the property owner's option, he can TV his line and install a cleanout. Again, the advantage to the property owner is they obviously have a new upper lateral, as well as they have a cleanout, and it relieves them of maintenance responsibility for this lower portion of the sewer. In the Crestmore neighborhood, we're doing a couple things above and beyond what is normally done on a sewer replacement project. The first one is, as part of our contract, we're having the contractor perform the TV inspection of this upper lateral. Second, in our construction contract, we have included the installation of a sewer cleanout. So that's already part of our contract. So what we're doing is, we're replacing the sewer main out in the street, and then we're replacing the lower lateral. At that time, we're performing a TV inspection of this section of the upper lateral here in orange, letting the property owner know what that condition of that lateral is, and then depending upon their desires, we're installing a cleanout if they wish us to install one. Again, we can perform the sewer replacement within this project without going on private property at all. We can install a cleanout just inside the property line with minimal impact to the property owner, if they don't desire the upper lateral to be replaced. However, in many instances, the upper lateral is made of orangeberg pipe. It is a material that is no longer used or specified. It is subject to degradation over the years. It was material that was used, you know, right after World War II through the early '60s. It is a material that we think is prevalent or exists in almost every location up within the Crestmore neighborhood, as well as other neighborhoods within the city. So what we have done is, we have gone out and done a full inventory of the sewer laterals within the entire Crestmore neighborhood. And this is a summary here, but I'll, instead of dwelling on these details, on this slide, let me show you the next slides, because I think it will illustrate this a little bit better. So there's four or five different conditions that we have out there. The cost of this upper, the cost of the lateral sewer replacement, the lateral replacement can probably be broken down into two components. One is the actual pipe replacement cost, and the other is what we call surface restoration cost. So when an upper lateral is replaced, it can be done one of two ways. It can be done with an open-cut method, which is essentially just like it sounds. Backhoe goes in there and trenches through whatever material is there, whether it's yard landscaping or concrete, and installs a new lateral. In some instances, it can be done trenchless. And essentially trenchless is pipe bursting. And what is done then is an excavation is made at the connection to the house, and an excavation is made just behind the sidewalk. And the section of pipe in between there is actually burst with a probe and a new piece of pipe drawn through there that replaces the old orangeberg pipe. In some instances, trenchless technology cannot be used for a couple different reasons. One, if the lateral is in really bad shape and has bellies in it, you can't replace it trenchless, because whatever you put in there will follow that same profile, and you'll have those bellies in the pipe, which obviously is not desirable. In other locations, the laterals can get fairly shallow where they reach the house, and the pipe bursting can in some instances create surface cracks on whatever material is there. So if it's concrete or decorative paving, it can cause cracking in those locations. In each instance, it's probably going to take a plumber to take a look at the specific of that individual lateral to determine whether or not trenchless or open-cut can be used. So this is a situation that we have out there in about 116 locations, which is a sewer lateral just in purely a yard area. We were estimating that the pipe replacement cost is between $2,500 and $5,000, depending on the length of it, and that surface restoration, again, depending upon what material is there, you can see straight lawn or landscaping, between $500 and $2,000. And again, these are just some rough estimates that we've talked to some plumbing contractors and other contractors to get these costs. This is another situation where we have a sewer lateral in a hardscape or landscaped area. Again, this one on top is probably a little bit more complicated. You've got a sewer lateral that goes underneath the retaining wall with landscaping in it, some walkways all the way up to a house. If this has to be open-cut, obviously that's a lot more surface restoration than, say, this instance down below here. But again, you're looking at hardscape and some landscaping. The sewer replacement cost between $3,000 and $5,000, and surface restoration cost between $1,000 and, you know, over $5,000 in that instance. About 69 homes out there have concrete slabs, probably original concrete slab that was installed as part of the home when it was constructed. Again, broken-out sewer lateral replacement cost between $3,000 and $6,000, and surface restoration cost less than $1,000 in most instances. And then this last case is where you have a sewer lateral in a driveway that has been replaced with some decorative paving. And in many, about 45 homes out there have this condition. In many of these instances, the property owners have gone in and replaced their driveways using one-time monies from PG&E in a lot of cases, as part of that program that PG&E had immediately following the Line 132 explosion. Here, you can see the lateral replacement cost, the pipe is about the same in all instances, between $3,000 and $6,000. And the surface restoration costs here are between $1,000 to over $12,000 if you have to replace that entire driveway. It's very hard to go in and do a, patch out a small section of the driveway and make it match when you've got a condition like this. And then this is another instance where you have paver stones. Paver stones are a little bit easier than the decorative paving, because you can actually pull those individual paver stones up and do the trench, and then put them back in and without having issues matching the existing surface out there. And again, these prices are slightly lower than the decorative paving. So what staff did coming off of the last meeting that we had was a couple different things. We researched what was done in other agencies, and there are sewer lateral replacement programs in place in a great many number of cities within California, Northern California. The cost of participation in those programs ranged from a low of about $1,500 to a high of about $5,000. So in addition to that, on September 26th, we held a meeting with the neighborhood residents, many of whom are here tonight, to talk about the sewer lateral placement program. In general, the residents agreed with the city council that the original proposed program of $1,700 that we brought forth on the 27th was too low. The residents also expressed some frustration that they were not notified that the sewer lateral issues existed at the time that they did their driveway replacement. One of the things that we reminded the residents was, at that point in time that they were doing the driveway replacement, city council had not determined the extent of the reconstruction efforts within the neighborhood, and it wasn't even known at that point in time that the sewer main and lower laterals would be replaced. In addition, there was some general appreciation that the city is considering this issue at all. So taking that information into account, staff has brought forth four options for the council to consider, and those are listed here, and I'll go over them briefly. The first option is 50% reimbursement of the cost up to $6,000 maximum. And what that means is that, let's say, a sewer lateral and surface restoration cost are $4,500. Then, under this option, that would allow for 50% reimbursement, or $2,250 would get reimbursed back to the property owner. If, for example, the total cost were $7,500, again, it would be half of that. It wouldn't reach that maximum of $6,000 until the total cost was in excess of $12,000. So that's option number one. Option number two is full reimbursement cost up to $6,000 maximum. And the distinction between this and option one is that if, in that same example, it's $4,500, this option would pay the full $4,500 for the cost of the lateral replacement and the surface restoration. If it was $7,500, this would pay $6,000, and the property owner would pay the difference, the $1,500. Option three is 100% reimbursement of the lateral cost, including full surface restoration. Again, that would be in instances where you have decorative paving or some other surface that is fairly expensive to replace, and we would have to do open-cut, this would pay for 100% of that cost, which in some instances could be, you know, in excess of, between surface restoration and the pipe, it could reach $18,000 or more for some residences. And then option number four was one that we've seen one other city do, and that's 50% reimbursement of the cost, and to cover the other 50%, if the property owner didn't have the funds to do so, would be a loan for 50% of the remaining amount. And that could be in the form of a low-interest or zero-interest loan paid back over, you know, some reasonable period of time, four years, five years, something like that. So those are the options that we looked at, and in your staff report, I don't have it on the exhibit here, but in your staff report, we do have the costs associated with each of those. Option number one, and again, this is based upon our preliminary estimates, you know, about $1.35 million. Option two, a little over $2 million. Option three would be $3.2 million. And option four would be the same as option one, which would be a little over $2 million. But option four would require a funding source for the loan amount, and potentially the loan could be, you know, another amount equal to $2 million. So we'd need to, you know, find a source to, you know, loan the money for that 2 million, extra $2 million, potential extra $2 million. Again, the loan program would have some other administrative issues associated with it that we would have to deal with, factor into it. Some other factors that the council should know for their decision here tonight is, part of the requirements of the settlement that the city did with Baykeeper, based upon the 2010 lawsuit, is a requirement for the city manager to bring forward to the city council by February of 2014, an ordinance for consideration that would put a "do-on-sale" clause for sewer inspection, sewer lateral inspections for homes as they're sold citywide. And essentially, what that would do would, prior to selling your house, you'd have to get your lateral inspected, and the lateral, if it was in substandard condition, would need to get repaired or replaced to the city's satisfaction prior, as part of the sale of that home. Another thing to remember is that the upper lateral placement is not proposed to be performed by city contractors. This program, under this program, the laterals would be replaced by the property owner using private contractors, and then they would submit reimbursement requests to the city, and the city would reimburse them for the cost of that construction. The other thing that was mentioned in the September 26th meeting by the residents was, you know, can the city help in either selecting plumbing contractors or pre-qualifying plumbing contractors? The other question that has arisen is, you know, can the city put a requirement on this program such that local contractors can be used? And I'll let the city attorney expand upon that further if need be, but essentially, the answer is no. Unfortunately, we can't put a local preference in place for this work. Additionally, I don't think the city wants to be in a position of pre-qualifying contractors to do work on private property. We sometimes do pre-qualification of work that is being done for the city. It's where we can control the work, but on a private property, we can't really control that work. So that's probably not something that we want to pursue. In summary, so the replacement of the upper laterals, I just want to repeat, is not a requirement of any resident to do. It's optional, but it's something that property owners would probably be prudent to do if their pipe is orangeberg and if it is in poor condition. The recommended option, we think, strikes the best balance. Oh, I didn't tell you what the recommended option is. I apologize. So our recommended option is option number two, which is full reimbursement of the cost of the sewer lateral replacement up to a maximum of $6,000. That's the recommendation that we put forth in the staff report. We think that that strikes a balance between, you know, protecting the integrity of the public sewer system, as well as, you know, not constructing improvements above and beyond that have public benefit on private property. So the resolution that is attached to the staff report tonight is consistent with the staff recommended option. If the city council picks another option, we can just replace and amend the resolution accordingly to match the option that they select, that you select. So with that, I conclude the presentation, and welcome any questions.
Harry, so in any case, the city's going to replace the lower portion. The city's going to video the whole portion, and the city's going to put in a cleanout.
The city will, correct. The city will replace the lower lateral, will TV the upper lateral, and will install a cleanout if it's desired. Okay? In some instances, let me use, let me show you an example here. So for this upper picture here, this property owner, if we TV his lateral, their lateral, and it's in good condition, they may say, "Look, I don't want a cleanout cut into my driveway. It's a brand-new driveway, decorative paving. I don't want it."
What's the advantage or disadvantage of the cleanout, other than aesthetics?
The advantage is twofold. It's another access point for maintenance. If there's a clog in it, you can go down in that location, and if the clog is between the cleanout and the main, it provides an access location.
And that's city responsibility?
Yes. The other is that it relieves the property owner of responsibility of maintenance from that cleanout point to the main.
Okay. So if we don't have a cleanout, then they're still responsible from the house all the way out to the main?
That is correct.
Okay. And to the city attorney, I know in San Francisco, they have local hire ordinances and all different kinds of things. Why can't we do it here?
One of the main reasons is that those ordinances, in general, are found to be of dubious legal validity, except in circumstances where the city can demonstrate that local contractors' costs are higher in that particular city. And so that would be, I think, a difficult finding to make for San Bruno. It's probably a much easier finding for San Francisco to make. So it would be, I think, a bit of a challenge to develop essentially an entirely separate ordinance that would have to be adopted prior to the adoption of this resolution in order to implement that sort of local preference program. That would be, would certainly delay, I think, the implementation of this program, because we'd have to do all of the research to bring that ordinance back, and it's not really clear that staff could determine that costs in San Bruno are higher than costs in other places.
Okay. And Harry, when you're talking about all of these different scenarios and the cost for each one, that cost includes permitting inspections and everything also, not just the actual physical construction?
These costs that are shown here are just for the construction. I think what we have talked about was that, consistent with the other work that was done, that has been done up in the neighborhood, that any fees associated with this work would be waived to the property owner.
And those additional costs would be absorbed by the trust? Okay. Okay. Okay, anyone else?
Through the chair, Michael. You quoted some prices, and I'm assuming those are based on 100% participation, but I know that you and your team have done some unofficial polling up there. And do you have any feel for whether or not everyone would be participating, or if it would be a small portion of people participating?
We feel like there would be a large amount of participation in this program, particularly given that, you know, through this process, the neighborhood has been educated as to, you know, what orangeberg pipe is and its life expectancy. I think prior to this, there has been about, I want to say, 35 or 40 homes that have gone in and replaced their orangeberg pipe. So there is, there is a knowledge within the neighborhood that replacing these pipes are probably a good thing for them long-term as homeowners, in addition to the benefits that it provides, you know, the city, our public system, to replacing those pipes.
Okay. And in terms of the property lines, so we're using property lines as the cutoff point between what we call upper and lower, in each case, is it pretty much defined by the edge of the sidewalk?
No. In this neighborhood, it varies. In some streets, it's about three foot behind the back of sidewalk, and on other streets, it's about four foot behind the back of sidewalk.
Okay. And so that area between the property line and the sidewalk, is that considered, that's a city easement, or is it?
That's part of the street right-of-way.
Part of the street right-of-way.
Right.
Okay. And in terms of what we could expect a cleanout to look like, so you said, you know, some people may not want that in the middle of a nice decorative driveway. Is it something that protrudes from the ground? Is it a hole in the ground with a cap? What could we expect that to look like?
Yeah, it's flush with the ground. I'm not sure if any of these photos actually show it, but it's flush with the ground. It's a round, it's very similar to, this is a water meter box that's shown on this. So it's not quite that big. So it'd be sitting, you know, roughly right here, and it's round, and it's got a little concrete cap on it, or a metal cap on it, says sewer. And it's got a concrete band that goes around it. Where some people might object to it is, in these instances, where if we were to go in and put one in, we would have to cut out a square block here of this existing driveway that might be smallest, probably three foot by three foot. So now we've got a three-foot-by-three-foot square that we've cut out at that location of that cleanout, to install the cleanout, and we can't, in most likelihood, replace that surface to exactly match that driveway. So you're always going to be able to tell that there's been a patch there. Even though we can get close to matching that, it's, depending on the age when that, how many years it's been since that driveway was constructed, and what they used to stain it, we're not going to match it exactly. So in those instances, some property owners have elected to not install the cleanouts.
Okay. And based on what we know about the geology in that area and the lifespan of orangeberg pipe, is it possible that if somebody didn't replace their section, that it could remain fine for the foreseeable future without needing to do any of these upgrades?
I think it is possible. I mean, that pipe has been in place well beyond what is considered, by some people, its normal life, but if it's in an inert situation, there's no trees nearby, there's no roots, no roots that are intruding on it, and they haven't had any past problems with their sewer, then yeah, the pipe can stay there longer.
Okay. And I think in, at the last presentation, you mentioned that there is some economies of scale in people choosing to do this at this point when the connections are exposed and they're ready to do that. But if, say, somebody decided not to do anything at this point, and they wanted to wait a few years, and then they decided they had to do it for whatever reason, percentage-wise, how much more expensive could they expect that to be? Would it be a 20% savings over doing it now, or would it cost twice as much at that point?
We haven't gotten into that level of analysis, but you do raise a good point. One of the items that was brought up at our meeting with the residents was, you know, a desire that they expressed amongst themselves, and we said that, you know, staff can help as much as possible, is to talk to one or several contractors to see if they did this on a large scale, if there were 20 of them, or 30, or 50 of them, you know, what sort of price break would you get from that? I would anticipate that there would be a price break. What that is, I couldn't tell you.
Okay. And in terms of our funding source, depending on the level that we choose to fund this, do we have a pretty good assurance at this point that any level would be covered by our trust fund? Or is there a point where we're running afoul of the guidelines for that?
Well, I'll take a stab at that. It's a difficult question, because we haven't directly discussed the issue with the trustee. So we haven't asked the trustee, "Is $6,000 going to do it, or what if it's seven, or what if it's five?" What we've tried to do, as you see in the resolution, is as best we can, make the case that at least a partial reimbursement for replacement of the upper lateral is something that's going to help the whole system. But there probably is a point at which, as Mr. Burrows said, that you're spending public money merely for a private improvement on private property. And... money merely for a private improvement on, on private property, and there's not really any dividing line where that is, and there certainly isn't, uh, certainly the trustee hasn't expressed that. I think, based on what you decide tonight, we would then go back to the trustee and say, "Here's the program that's been, at least, tentatively approved by the city council." Uh, make the best case that, that we can, using the resolution and the documents that are here in the file and the staff report, and say, hope that the trustee will find that the reimbursement plan does come, uh, within the ambit of the, of the trust. But again, remember that, uh, most of the, if, if not all, of the trust expenses have been paid for, uh, except for very little, have been paid for improvements on, on public property, or on private property, only where there's some sort of imminent danger that there's going to be a problem, like retaining walls and so on in the, in the canyon. So that, that is something that we're looking at carefully, and we tried to make the, the best case we could in the resolution, but it's certainly by no means, it's by no means certain that the trustee would automatically and without question approve 100% reimbursement, for example.
Okay. And so if the answer came back that, "No, that we're, we're sort of exceeding our, our boundaries there," then we, uh, we can sort of pull that back and kind of reconvene to figure out what, what is appropriate?
Right, and, and of course...
We're not locked into funding it without a funding source?
The, you know, the, the, the trade-off there is, there would be a bit of a delay, and I know that, that Harry is, uh, looking forward to, as are the residents, to, to getting the project completed, so it would be good not to have to come back at multiple occasions to, to revamp the entire program because of difficulties in getting reimbursement from the trust.
Okay. Thank you. And one final question, Harry. The video, uh, of the, of the pipes, are, are we going to provide that information or a copy of the video to the homeowners prior to them having to make a decision on whether they, not they want to do this?
Yes, what, what we're doing is, we're, um, talking to the property owners, we're giving them the, um, copy of the video if they desire it, but, but we're telling them, um, you know, what, what the video shows, um, so that they can factor that into their decision.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Harry, a couple of quick questions. If we decide on this tonight, whatever we decide, this, this will be done in conjunction with the project we're doing now. People can't bank this and say, "Well, you know, I want to do it in a couple of years" or a couple, "I don't want to do it now, but you, you paid for my neighbors and my 300 neighbors a couple of years ago, and why can't you pay for mine now?"
So, so what we're proposing with this program is, well, two things. Let me just clarify. The construction that we're doing right now, again, is to replace the sewer main in the street and the lower lateral, and install the clean out. What, what we're proposing for the program is that, um, the program would reimburse residents who have, um, retroactively done, done sewer replacement, lateral replacement, back to, um, the date of the explosion forward, so, um, as well as going forward to what we perceive is the end of our construction, reconstruction within the neighborhood. So after this project that we're doing now, which is the remainder of the utilities throughout the entire neighborhood, we've got one last large construction project in the neighborhood, and that's to do the, um, road reconstruction and the street lights, and, and some landscaping and, and, um, traffic calming improvements. So that, that's our last project. We're anticipating that that project will be done January of 2015, so what's written, um, in the staff report is the program would, um, extend to that time period. So residents would have until essentially January of 2015 to do this replacement. It doesn't have to happen exactly concurrently with, um, us being in their front yard, replacing the lower lateral. Ideally, if we can time that, that would be great, um, or if we can time that down a street where a lot of those laterals are being replaced at that same time, that would be great, but it doesn't have to be.
Okay. And the last thing I have is, uh, you mentioned about the baykeepers and having to, uh, do something when you sell your house in the future. Uh, if in fact a homeowner does this now, does that preclude them from having to video and inspect in the future?
I don't know.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take a stab at answering that. The, um, it, baykeeper requirement is for the presentation of an ordinance that would require inspection or repair on sale. Presumably, a homeowner who takes advantage of this program, um, would be able to demonstrate that inspection or repair has already occurred, um, but we have not yet developed a recommended program for the city council's consideration, so at this point, uh, it would be premature to assure you that, um, a property owner would have, would not need to do anything on sale. Um, I think our intent is to try and structure a program for your consideration that would take into, it would take advantage of the fact of what we know, what's been done recently, and what we know a, a property owner can warrant to, and avoid, to the maximum extent possible, a property owner, uh, incurring additional difficulty as part of that due on, uh, inspection on sale, uh, provision.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Rico?
Just on the video, Mr. Mayor. In some cities, the video is only good for so long. Doesn't mean, so when the ordinance comes forward, keep that in consideration. Some cities, if you've taped it and you have the DVD, um, certain cities in the, in the county say, "Okay, that's good for three years, five years," because obviously, over a period of time, things can, can happen, even if it is new and replaced. So I think we need to have that, um, understood when that, when that topic comes back. One thing you had mentioned was January 2015, and I don't want to get off-topic, but circling back around to that, because all of a sudden, that obviously seems very long, and I saw some, you know, some, uh, interpretation and size within the audience, and so...
Grimace.
Grimace, okay. So, that I want to understand better, but we'll, we'll stick to this, and, um, I'll have questions when we circle back around.
Ken?
I, I have an issue with this public money. It's not all public money. I mean, it's public money within, within the tru-, within the area. So, I, I, we could be spinning our wheels here if, if we're, we're talking about a, you know, something that is a, uh, full reimbursement on, all on proper, private property. So, I'm not feeling comfortable with, you know, with, you know, with how we're going to deal with the administrator on, on, on approving this. I'm, I'm in favor of full reimbursement. This is not the same as using general fund money, you know, in a, for a, uh, sewer lateral repair project in any other part of the city. So, I mean, this is, and we've, we've stated it at the last meeting, is that this wouldn't happen if there wasn't an explosion. So, I, I throw that out. But that said, is there, is there a way that we can implement a, a citywide program also, and then maybe give, uh, you know, fund it in two ways? You know, through a city program and also through the trust, to avoid that? I guess that, I guess that might be discussed if we have issues. I do have, I'm, I'm, I don't want to speak for the neighborhood, but this gets out that there's going to be in excess of 300, 250 sewer laterals up for grabs, uh, you're going to get inundated, and so, you know, inundated with plumbers. But there's got to be some, we have to find some way to, you know, curb the solicitations, try to at least, you know, organize a referral basis, you know, so that, uh, you know, so that the residents feel comfortable. They've been through the wringer already. So, you know, and some of them, you know, more so than others, but, uh, we've heard stories about what's, you know, issues that have gone on up there. And then you answered my question as far as reimbursement for those that have already taken care of them, so they'll, they'll be at least reimbursed for whatever program we select. And then I'm interested to hear either from you, Harry, or from the public, is to those that have those situations where they have a decorative, decorative, uh, paving that they don't want to tear up, or have the retaining wall and all the hardscape and landscaping that, uh, they just can't see, you know, disrupting at this point. Thank you.
Irene?
I'd like to hear from...
Okay.
Just on that, my understanding, though, too, is with the decorative, there is the option to have the clean out.
Correct.
It's not a requirement.
That is correct.
Uh, because in all, you know, you can say, "Well, we can try," or they, whomever can try to match, it's not going to match. It's the bottom line. Let's just be upfront and frank. It will not match. So, um, but that, that does leave the option to the resident, uh, for the aesthetics or, or their, their choice.
That is correct.
Um, I was glad to hear about it going, uh, I'll say, back, because I know there, um, there are some folks that have already done that, have already, uh, done the sewer laterals. One who I spoke to just the other weekend, and, and she said, "You know, I've done it," but putting, taking me out of the equation, and looking at the neighborhood and, and the residents, um, you know, at this point, and I'll like to hear from everyone, but, uh, option three, I, I know we have to go to the administrator, I know that it's a trust, um, but I, I think that, let's put it this way, you don't gain anything without asking and without trying. And I think it's, uh, the money is there for that neighborhood, that's what it was presented for. I think we could hopefully have a strong argument to, as we have with the others, that this moves it forward. And in all, uh, in all honesty, uh, the neighborhood continues to go through, uh, a lot of inconveniences. Um, you've got new homes that, uh, have gone, and they're dusting like crazy, and just with all the construction and, uh, the house and the cars and all of that. So, um, at this point, unless I'm compelled otherwise, I could see, uh, going toward , uh, option three. And then again, if we, uh, have some unsettling news that that's not, then we, we have to come back and have a discussion.
Okay. Anyone from the, uh, audience like this, please come up to the podium and tell us your name and your street.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Maria Barr, and I live at 2740 Concord Way. During the ex-, after the explosion, um, before I did my driveway, and I have a decorative driveway, I decided to, uh, repair the upper lateral, and I've already paid for everything. In, in this case, do we need to provide the receipts of the money that I paid for that, or how will it work?
Okay, is there anything else?
That, that's, that would be it.
Okay.
Will we be given the information before the meeting is over, or should I call somebody to find out?
I believe the plan would be to, to show receipts, obviously, for what you've done, but Harry?
When, when the people come to my house, I, I bring the receipts to them, that I've done the work already, or do you still have to investigate, uh, investigate?
Well, what we would do would be, assuming the, the council approves a program here tonight...
Right, right.
Yeah. Then, then we would, um, we would, staff would put together, um, essentially, a one-page flyer, a flyer that outlines the details of the program. We would get that out to the neighborhood, and would explain all of those details to you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, thank you.
Okay.
I'm Gary Greter, 1581 Clermont.
Raise that mic up, so, there you go. Thank you.
Gary Greter, 1581 Clermont. Mr. Sellers asked a question about, uh, you know, the condition of the orangeberg pipe, and, you know, it could be in, look perfectly fine, but then the other thing came up about the point of sale and the gate, what's it, baykeeper or something? The fact that it is orangeberg pipe, and you, it comes at a time when you want to sell your home, the fact that it's orangeberg pipe, does it then make it substandard and it, and the seller would have to replace it regardless of its condition? I think the mayor asked that question, and I wonder if there was, I, I guess I didn't get the, the answer quite right.
Yeah, my, my understanding is that, no, just because it's orangeberg pipe does, does not mean that it has to be replaced. It's, if, um, in the opinion of the city, the, um, pipe is not in, um, operating condition to the satisfaction of the city, then it would need to be replaced.
So just the fact that it's orangeberg, and it's considered substandard now, as long as it's in place, it's kind of grandfathered or something, and it's, it's not the obligation of the seller to replace it just because it's orangeberg pipe?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
If I, if I could just add, no. The program has not been prepared or presented to the city council, so at this point, we are really speculating and anticipating. So, that program has not yet been developed, and at, I'm, I'm sorry.
At this point, it would be premature to say with certainty that the program will do X or Y. We're, we're anticipating, based on the agreement that we've entered with the baykeepers, um, which specifically calls for the program to, uh, replace defective orangeberg private laterals by a specified deadline as a requirement of transfer of property.
Right, is that a subjective term, though? Who determines defective from not?
These are details that need to be addressed in the development of the program. So, I, I would just, I would only caution that we're, we're talking about something that hasn't been done yet. So at this point, we, we need to meet this requirement of the agreement that we have in settlement of the baykeepers lawsuit.
And I know that with all the disclosure things, have to go with home sales now, do you have to declare?
Exactly.
"I've got an orangeberg pipe in my driveway," you know?
Right.
Just another, okay. All right, thank you.
Hi, Kathy Di Renzi, Clermont Drive. As a resident of the neighborhood, um, we're still going through a lot of, uh, mess in our neighborhood. The majority of us have the orangeberg pipe or pipe going through the lawn, so I'm really happy that you're upping the, the rates. I am for 100%. That would be number three for the neighborhood, because the money is not the city's money, but it's the PG&E money that was designated for our neighborhood, so that's why I would be for 100%. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Dan Di Troppini, Plymouth Way, and I just wanted to second that, what Kathy just mentioned. Um, you know, we've all been through a lot, and I just want to also, um, thank Rico and, and Ken for, you know, putting that out there. 100% option number three. So, I wanted to say thank you very much, and I think that's the option that we all, all need to vote for.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, Rico? You wanted to go full circle?
Well, going back to Mr. Greter, not, not that I think he, you're, you're going anywhere anytime soon, right? Because I saw you mowing the lawn, so it looks good, so, okay. But, um, I think that's a question that does need to be answered, maybe not just in this program, because I think what you're saying is, okay, so let's plan today, because, you know, looking down the, the path. I appreciate, uh, the public's comment, um, but I'm still in favor of option three, as, uh, was already stated. And so at this time, I would say we go with option three, and, um, we ask and go forward and see that we make it happen with the administrator.
Any other comments, or is that a motion? Irene?
Mark, I'd just like to clarify. If we, if we vote for option three, take it to the administrator, trustee, and he says, "No way," is, is there a mechanism that we can put in place tonight that allows, that makes it so we don't have to circle back and cause more delay? So that, say he says, "No, not 100%, but, but we could do 80% or, you know, 95%," or whatever he would allow? Am I making sense? So that, so maybe he doesn't say 100%, which I am for, I think you all should have that, but I would hate to delay all this stuff again if we have to come back? So...
Yeah, it, it's a good idea. It's hard to think of what that alternative would be on, on the fly tonight, having not spoken to the trustee. I think our position at staff would be that we would do, uh, whatever we can to support the city council's policy decision and the resolution, including, uh, making some changes in the resolution perhaps, to beef up the, the findings even more, uh, so that it's clear that it expresses the sentiment that was expressed, uh, tonight, and the desires of the community, as well as those of the city council, to provide that reimbursement, uh, present it as we have our, the other expenses that we've presented to the trustee, and, uh, go from there.
Okay, so, excuse me if I may. So the worst-case scenario would be, we would get it to him within X... So the worst-case scenario would be we would get it to him within X amount of time, like next week, this week, and then come back in two weeks at the city council meeting if we have to make a change?
Right. That would certainly be possible.
Okay. So two weeks isn't going to kill anybody's schedule? Okay, great. Okay. I just wanted to, I don't want to delay people's stuff.
Rico?
On what the vice mayor said, I, I think that's my concern, too. We need to get this expedited. People, I, I believe, have been waiting, want to move forward, want to give, you know, get coordinated here and, and get everything done. So I, I think do what you need to do to beef it up, and if that means we have some issues that arise and we need to call a special meeting in the city council to readdress this in a, in a faster means, then let's do what we need to do.
One more speaker? Go ahead. Tell us your name and your street, please.
Concordway. This was an ad in Examiner the other day by PG&E. I'm just going to read one line. "We're compensating San Bruno victims, their families in the Coont community more than $550 million because it's the responsible thing to do. They should not say no. They should go for this."
That's, I don't think that's the, that's the issue. Any, any other comments from the, from the council? We have worked very, very hard over the last three years, very hard. Just came back from New York for three days, talking to a lot of financial people regarding our particular position on fines and penalties going forward. Nothing to do with this evening, but we, we will, we will do our darndest to make this happen. Because as I said before, you know, we wouldn't all be here this evening talking about laterals if it wasn't for an explosion that occurred in this neighborhood. So I also feel, let's just get it done, get it taken care of, and it's part of the rebuild. So that's, that's my two cents. Any other discussion or action?
If there's, no, I'm sorry.
Let me just.
Ken?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's the money for the, for the, for the neighborhood, whether it's public streets or private property, and this is a utility issue. But I encourage the neighbors to, I mean, there is going to be certain situations that you're not going to, you know, be in favor of, even if we give you full reimbursement. There's clauses in here that you, that we've discussed as far as if you do it now or do it within a year, you're not going to get a chance to do it later on. So make your decisions, you know, really look hard at your hardscape, your nice, you know, driveways and new driveways and things. I wouldn't rule out putting that, you know, putting, putting, putting those cleanouts in. Cleanouts are very important, and you might kick yourself, you know, a few years down the road if you, if you don't, even if you have a new sewer lateral. So I think you need, you, I think we've tried to give you as many scenarios and options here, and hopefully, majority of you will get through this unscathed, I mean, if there's, if there's a possibility. So my colleague would like to make a motion.
I.
Please.
Do you have anything else, Mike? I, I was just going to add on to, to something Ken said, because if, if a house, and Harry, maybe you can help me out with this, if a house has a cleanout inside, where a lot of houses do have cleanouts in the garage, if they were to replace the pipe, not put a cleanout in, that pipe would still be serviceable. I, I understand that the city wouldn't be responsible for the lower lateral, but I mean, we're, in most cases, you're talking about 75 to 80% of that pipe being the, the homeowner's responsibility anyway. So all you're really buying is that extra 20% if you already have a cleanout. So I just wanted to get that out there, just so that people kind of understand the mechanics of that, that it, the city would be responsible for the smallest piece by putting that cleanout in, but replacing the pipe still has benefit, even if they're only using their existing cleanouts that are in the house.
That is correct. They, they would have the benefit of a new lateral from their cleanout in their house and their, under their house, in their garage, wherever it's located, to the main.
To the main, right. Correct.
And the cleanout is mainly just to distinguish where the problem lies. Because if the problem, if, with a cleanout in the right place, and you find out that it is on your property, you're still responsible. What you rule out by having a cleanout is, you know, making sure that, that, that the problem is actually in the lower lateral, you know, or the city, the city's right away.
Okay. Rico?
If not, I'd be, I'll go ahead and introduce a resolution approving a sanitary sewer lateral replacement program in the Crestmore neighborhood with option number three.
And Mr. Mayor and Mr. Medina, if I may suggest that that resolution also include some additional language to reflect the sentiment expressed at the city council meeting here tonight and at the meeting that Mr. Burrows attended at the community, so that we can make it clear to the trustee that this is the city council's policy decision.
I had said, do we need to beef it up? And I think in summary, that's what that just said.
Okay.
Yes. So introduced.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Thank you. (applause).